No, I didn't do it, Chairman. This person to the left of me did it instead.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the Central Buckingham Town Council Planning Committee. For the speakers online, the Republic speakers. We start the agenda then on one of the apologies for absence. Thank you for that. Item two, declarations of interest. To receive declaration of any personal or prejudicial interest under consideration of this agenda, that's a start brief as by law when we ever meet. Thank you. Any others on the agenda? No, that's noted. Thank you for the start brief minutes. We have minutes of the Land Planning Committee, which is Monday 20th of March. I have them here. I think you've all seen them. May we have approved those as the correct record?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. And we move on to planning applications. Right, just to your information, more Buckinghamshire planning area next meeting is on Wednesday, the 22nd of May. Strategic Sites Committee meeting on the 9th of May. As far as we're aware, there's nothing yet on the 9th of November, but so far ahead. Yep. That's on the centre. Thank you. Right, we can go straight on then in that case to planning application number one, which is 58A Wells Street. A listed building. The application is the demolition of a porch. It was a porch that was added on much later than the original house. And current owner feels it's taken up and rather lost the garden. They want to put it back to how it was. It'll give her half as much space again as she currently has. Buckingham Society, Roger, any objections? No objections on that. Anyone have any comments? In that case, we'll do our normal. I'll propose and Anthony will second. I propose no objection. Thank you. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everybody bar councillors' faction. Thank you. Now, this application, number two, has already been approved. It was put on the agenda, but it's been approved since. It is, it's a picket for lawfulness, but a proposed removal of a chimney for Rogers Lane up on Lace Hill. We had no opportunity to comment on this, although we have done previously on these CPLs. There is some concern at our meeting this afternoon that the removal of a chimney, which mirrored that the house next door, is not what we Town Council would just see. Roger, Buckingham Society have a view?
We have no objection if it was proved chimney for the street. But as you say, it's a bit like now.
Yeah. That particular horse is bolged it. What I would like to suggest, members agree, is that even though it has been approved already, that we do question the local planning authority. Why weren't notified? As we have been notified in all the previous, if we get the law from this. And also just the call, sorry, Catherine?
No, I found it on the website as I do always.
Right.
It just, I don't know, expect people to just go and see. The owners won't be able to find it.
The original planning condition being that some of the... Yeah, just to note, on the original planning condition on the state part of Lace Hill, no development should take place until details on screen and boundary wall, fences and other means of enclosure have been submitted and approved and written by local planning authority. Development should be carried out in accordance with the approved details that the building occupied. It should be retained as such after things like that. And so I think what we're saying, if we'd like to make a point that we had no opportunity to comment and that it is Town Council policy under our design code, we encourage chimneys. We don't ask them to be taken down, basically. Catherine would word it correctly. Is everyone happy with that? We don't need to make any comments. Thank you very much.
Chair. Hello.
Sorry, Martin.
Of course, it doesn't have to be a real chimney, as we have seen across the way here in the retirement home. They do put false chimneys on, you know, and that would have been a way if they didn't want or it wasn't suitable having the chimney there because of openness. It can be a false one. So that could have been an alternative way of having a chimney without having a chimney.
Yeah, that's what I think.
They are all false chimneys on the way to Spain.
Oh, well.
The point is, you can relate to chimney. So you're creating a hole in the roof. You need to put that flashing around it just like it was getting you. And it's probably just a floor, but going on this, it might then shut it properly.
The roof first, it would have been their job just probably see it there during the roof originally.
Where I come from, there's something called flashing. You can put around chimneys.
So they would have filmed us in short, but you would have thought that they would have gone through that.
So just a question making out that point of view. Thank you, Martin. Right, item number three is Piratops Limited, we're in Middle Slade. It's the bottom of the hill going up to industrial estate. It's the extension of existing food processing facility to provide additional processing, storage space. It's quite a big site as you can see on the ground. The land, they've got the space to do it, not taking up many of their parking to have at the moment.
That's what the industrial estate is for and they've got the land. So, yeah, it looks like a good development. Go for it.
Yeah.
John?
I think we should support this application.
Yeah.
More than just the objections. Because of all the stuff they're doing regards to, you know, solar panels and reusing materials and using gravity rather than electricity to get them, I mean, it's commanding. So I think we should actually support this.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, I'm happy to support this and we should encourage companies and businesses to stand bucking them. And by expanding, it's a really good sign to, you know.
Fran?
I think we should support it. I think it's a great asset to our town that there is a business that is looking to expand and is seems to be thriving.
I agree to your point.
Yeah, yes.
You have also any comments? I then propose we have no objections. Anthony seconded.
No, no, no. I propose that we support it, not no objection. We actively support it.
There's a boost down, yeah.
Do that, right? Okay. Would allow me to do that?
Of course.
Then I propose, I suppose we support it. Thank you. That's a big point. Fine, that's seconded. Robert?
Now you've done it, listen to, it just seems appropriate. I thought the feeling that those who vote was they positive about industrial side. It might be something that we could consider if members doubt, but if there's press release on the fact that we're supporting people having jobs in Buckingham, on the fact that it's growing. It's quite depressing or our press release, the other, this is a real positive. I mean, members might not agree, but...
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize if I missed it, but I didn't actually see it show.
No, don't worry about it. We'll keep you home, Mr.
I'm excited for you, then I spoke.
Thank you. I don't want to... He spoke after the bid seconded. Sean, you want to say something?
No, I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah, we talked about it.
All those in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Number four is One Burley Court, Burley Police, not police. Certified with lawfulness proposed garage conversion. We've looked at this and Catherine and Anthony, I all agree that we think this needs a planning application. Because it's, that doesn't really mix typical lawlessness because the development rights would be redrawn from this part of the estate. Otherwise than that, we can see no objection. It remains at three bedrooms. Converting a ground core garage into disabled bedroom. There's plenty of parking space as well. That's Catherine's photograph, we can see that. So would members like to comment on that?
Question for, yeah.
So I then propose that we've looked at this application. We believe it truly is subject of a planning application, not a simple law enforcement.
That we support it.
Otherwise, we have no objection.
Yeah.
Yep. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour?
No, I'm voting for it.
I'm going to call the second in the bag. They're all those in favour?
He's too eager.
It's got the game, that's everyone.
Let's go. I'll be putting your left hand up and then you want to speak or your right hand.
Good idea.
One thing, the first two things in store.
You're rattling on well. Item five is about White House Farm at Porton Road, which also is item nine. Would members agree that we take those two items together? Thank you. Right, so we'll consider them both now together. They are about separate things, but it's the same building. We don't have to go in very twice. So this is a list of building applications externally and internally with elevating windows, doors, first floor dairy installation, French drains, removal of ceilings, removal of staircases, steps, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The history of White House is it has been, the building has been abandoned for some time. It has been hauled now and the new owners, as well as restoring the building back to its former listing glory, also going to carry out a programme, big programme at Three Glutton and the farm. So everything they're doing should be encouraged. You've seen the photographs, I think, of the farmhouse. It is an interesting building architecture. And I believe that it should be done to encourage this work to be done. So that's the first part. That is all that work on the actual building itself. Roger, Buckingham Society?
No, we've got no objection. The only thing that we have to talk, so is, I think...
Anyone have any comments?
John, is this a comment this time? Just to say, it's usually a sort of, that's it.
But we have noted there, there's not yet been a, a notice put up in public, but that... I propose that we have no objection to this. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Thank you, that's everybody. Off the bottom. And taking... Sorry, sorry. Yeah, there's no comment from the heritage office there on the application. So it's subject to its approval and... Yeah, yeah. And item nine, we take at the same time, which is same building for re-roofing. What works largely on like-for-like basis, including re-slatings, waterproof membranes, installation of modern chimney, provision of grey water filters and insulation in the attic space. Again, no banning notice yet and no heritage office to comment. Same would apply if anyone wished to say anything, otherwise no. I told you, no objection to that also. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Thank you, that's everyone. Thank you.
Just to note, there is no item nine.
No, don't make a few of that.
Right.
There is, but it is in university's very far front.
Yeah. We move on then to the eight item, sorry, six item on the agenda, which is 14 Ortonville household application for a non-permanent wood structure in the rear garden. It is the business to temporarily house cats. They already do have a cat orphanage, as it were. They're taking cats, but this building will be quarantined from that. Catherine did check on the plans because they were very vague on all of this. The plan will change back very quickly. And Catherine is satisfied with the information she got. Anyone wish to say anything? Martin?
Has there been anything from the neighbours?
Yeah.
There has been...
There is a sign, no to sign, so she didn't write over that.
Yeah, but she's got two sheds, two outdoors and had cats in for some years.
Okay, all right.
Works with the pets protection charges.
Yeah.
Yep.
So she's... I have an objection to the good of the community.
John?
I'm just curious as to why wood structure would need planning permission anyway?
I think it's the use of it.
Oh, it's the use of it?
And it's not a bike shed, it's a catering.
Yes.
Right, so in that case, if no one else has any comment, I propose we have no objection. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Thank you, that's everyone. And we move on to item seven on the agenda, which is the land adjacent to 73 Orton Road. This is an old one that's come back. 2015, we first, at the time, we raised objections because the windfall site and our neighbour plan prefers windfall sites that we restricted to 10 houses. This is the 13 going in houses. We lost that by 12:00. It was originally 13 on the, 13 on the application. This is 12. And what we have here... See Catherine has done quite a big list of history in it. They've come and gone on the application and we've got to the stage now where they have got to complete the last of reserve matters by this November. So they're asking for rewording of conditions nine and 16 so they can get the work done during the summer much, much more quickly. I think you've probably read all this, listing condition nine, opposed wording next to it. Listing condition 16, opposed wording next to it. Where we are is that they're going to close the entrance to Roxwell, which is further up the hill. And Roxwell will use the same entrance to this estate, which has a very twisty road going into it. It's a five metre climb up from the road up onto the top of the site. We did ask way back that they should consider entering it from Western Avenue, across council land where the garages are, but fell on death's ears. I think at the time, ABDC even denied their own that. We aren't where we are. So it's up to this committee to decide whether we encourage them to get on with this work or raise objections if we don't feel that the conditions have been altered to help that expedite. Roger, Buckingham Society, have a view on?
Our view is a corollary at the Highways, so it's contempt.
Yeah, that's...
That's it, isn't it? You said we're talking to them.
Yeah, Highways has been quite heavily involved in this, haven't they? And one of the good things about it is they're moving the entrance to Roxwell away from Addington Road, which is opposite that. So there'll no longer be a crossroad, so it's slightly further down the hill this time. The other thing to take note of, there are protected trees there and they won't be harmed. This will be between two groups of protected trees. Anyone else need comment? John?
It's going to be a really important game about so. Because you're, you know, Blaisfield and Mates Morton, coming down that hill is quite a challenge to see whether you're going to come down. Outside terrace houses just beyond the... And if we're consistent with our neighbour, we would be able to object on principle because it's 12, not 10.
Right.
And then we've lost that.
We did do that, yeah.
I know, but we could still...
The problem was it said we would prefer townhouses, not that we insisted. It's going to be corrected hopefully in the new neighbour plan.
I think it's going to cause problems. But I mean, if the Highways, we can say not, who are we to judge? But I think it's still going to be very dangerous junction. See, there would be some...
Well, there is, Catherine, come on, there is considerable splay to the entrance. There are a bit of traffic down the footpath.
Yes, we didn't want footpath downhill of it because you're not then trying to cross the road where you meet very lot of people. Where you can't see a thing. Yeah. So we thought that just having that footpath would help to keep people to go that way. If there was a bit of traffic, we thought, oh, we get the pass, we got it. We really do not have the facilities. Just a little wind splay, you have to cut him into the bank, so.
Is it worth, is it worth suggesting that perhaps it ought to be a pedestrian crossing? People walking up the hill from town, who want to go to Western Avenue, have to cross what is quite a tricky little road junction there as they get further up. And if there were to be a, a cross there, it's a car, then that would stop the traffic.
There is an invisible difference down with them because they have just come over the crest when the crossing would be there.
Yeah.
And crossing from the point of view of pedestrian would have better vision. It was once you've gone up on the flat.
Well, yes.
Between this access and Western Avenue, you would then have access to the bus stops.
Yes. I don't know.
But then people who are going downtown would have to go off them first and then down. But then they've got to do that at some household now because they suddenly move there.
So I think where we are with this at the moment, I don't think we can go back on and try and get the planning permission overturned on all these aspects or reserve matters. What we are being asked is to agree to change the conditions so they can get the work completed before it runs. They don't lie and they don't have that. Martin?
I'm happy for it to go there, but I would like maybe a better mud prevention control from the sites outwards.
That is written into all planning permissions. And I'd say the report was held quite quick if we do have a rewind to report. Because we had to report, obviously, a lot of stuff there. And something was done about it very swiftly.
Oh, okay. So we're okay with that?
It is a standard, standard.
Yeah, but this is downhill and then downhill again. You know, the axis is downhill and then on to the main road is then downhill.
We've had this problem with Morgan Road too, because we live by the rugby club. That trail, you know, passed Addington Road and we got that.
Can you believe that that can be? You know, it was just a condition, I would say, but I'm happy with it. It's to get it over with.
It's already in the condition that we were watching before they leave the site.
Yeah, that's the thing, yeah.
Yeah. And just out of interest, we've got development going on near 421, the Solar Farm. They're coming out onto the 421 and it's been spotless. They've been really, really good. They are watching the vehicles before they leave the site. Yeah.
Well, they ought to, again, they ought to be, you know, praised and rewarded for that, really.
Yeah.
Yes. We were able to do that at the town meeting because the landowner was here. He was congratulating.
All right.
Well, he's asked about it. Oh, it's so clear, but he said the contractors are doing it and they're congratulating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's no turning right either. No, you can't turn right.
That's right, yeah. So then what we're looking for is approval of the proposed wording changes to condition nine and condition 16. And in that case, I propose we have no objection. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Thank you. John, you're abstaining, right? On abstention. Thank you. Item A, University of Buckingham, Verney Park Campus, London Road. Display of entry sign, two total signs, including existing signs. You'll see Catherine's put the signs out there. This is now the university's corporate colours, corporate wording. We've already seen the same at West Western Hotel. They're asking to make that change. Roger, is Buckingham Society happy with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? In that case, I propose to have no objections. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everybody bar... Back to the library done already, so we move on to item 10. Again, University Bellot House, Hunter Street. Determination pursuant to class 14 of the Town and County Planning Act as to whether prior approval is in part of the installation of solar PV equipment on the roof of Bellot House. You've seen the picture there of Bellot House. It's built in the 1980s. Probably one of the biggest buildings on the university. The plan is to put solar panels on both sides. It's essentially, it's going to be roof, it'll catch both southern, north, sorry, not north, don't get the southern, it could get both at east star and west sunshine. Anyone have any comments on this? Martin?
I'm sure it's taken into account, but when you put roofs on, the type of tiles determine the runoff speed of the water. But when you put solar panels on top of those, does the water not sort of shoot off a bit quicker? And also they're a bit higher and then, you know, how does it get into the catering? Or does it cause a mess on the ground?
I don't do it under the panels.
You don't take the panels...
The panels, the water goes under the panels.
Well, now, because the panels sit on top of the roof, so how can I get...
Catherine has given an answer to that. You don't put them right up to the edge, you put them to within one metre.
Yes, but what I'm saying is...
They can, but they're not.
I agree. It comes off the panel and on to the... Yes, but when I had my roof done, they said the type of tile depends on the angle of the roof. And because of the grittiness of the tile slows the water as it builds up and comes down. Here we've got a slab of water and only one metre for it to do whatever it needs to do before it gets into the gutter.
I can't answer that.
I can ask my son to ask that bit of roofers so I can ask the question tomorrow.
I'll be very interested.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, it's not a problem here, but it's just something I'm thinking about.
Not subjecting to this. Okay.
Well, it is related to this, but hey ho.
The other thing that we did discuss at the planning briefing is about grey water collection, but obviously that's for new buildings. You've got no way of disposing of it there. It would have been an ideal if it's a new build that... That might answer John, I know John's concerns about grey water. In that case, there's no other comments. I propose that we have no objection. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? That is, and that's all, everyone in favour except for all. That's a start brief.
Well, I agree, Ken, but we're actually lower Buckingham's carbon footprint by substantially, weren't we?
Yeah.
When it's constructed, all that energy that they're going to go, make a difference to the carbon footprint that Buckingham wants to.
How many...
It's like a slight way for me to certainly...
Thank you. Right, number 11 on your agenda is 12 Pillow Ray. This is a household application for single story rear extension. We did have this at the last meeting. It's literally spilling in a gap between house and the garage. But the drawings were, seem to be in error. Roofline of the garage was too high. You'll see Catherine has put them side by side, the new corrected drawings. John?
Now I understand. I thought it was a very sophisticated spot on difference. And now I understand that, you see. Thank you.
West Wall.
Yeah, it's something a bit like that. So again, what is the difference?
It's a very subtle difference.
It is.
And the other thing that appeared in light, this, the site plan was at 100 to 200. It wasn't at 100 to 200, which they liked, but at 100 to 500. Thank you. All those, no, I'm sorry, I put no objection to the change. Anthony, seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. That's everybody. Right, amended plans, not in our parish, Mates Morton. This is the David Wilson application, which you'll know about, that got four nap drive, Oscar Road, which is originally for 170 dwellings. At this point in time, it seems to be fixed at 163 dwellings. Our planning plan reminds me this change again. This is quite an extraordinary application because they put two applications in more or less about the same subjects. 99 documents on the first one, number 12 there, and 98 documents on the second one. And they posted them all on Good Friday.
Wow.
Which, as Roger would know, is a very good trick by former planners because you've got a four day holiday. Um there has been a lot of train between, makes more comparison council and the Foscat um. Meeting about this, and Kate Frye from Foscat has actually asked the planning officer to delete. Experian, Experianist plans, but the planning officer has refused, saying that that's a problem in indexing with B C planning. Uh which seems to be part of the problem, the duplication of old versions, she also said they cannot eliminate the duplicate planning application. So what makes Morton Parish proposing to do is to. Just consider the first one there at number twelve, but note that they are also applying number thirteen to that answer. It's not really, at the end of the day, anything that we need to comment on. I know there has been an issue over the roundabout there, which has been raised by me, what makes Morton, but again, that doesn't really concern us because it wouldn't increase traffic. Into Buckingham necessarily. So Roger, any comments from Buckingham South?
Just can't really answer that, you see. There have been some, I'm quite sure I'm one of the convinced when. But I've been kind of also saying that, that all the, not only the ninety nine documents, you know, we're coming to study. So I suggested that parish council. Ask the developer. Very best, but up to where it is. So that, elevation for buying that would be well, but I'm just. Putting ninety nine things on the website and at the heart of it. Around the back.
Yeah.
So I think it was actually a big, it was a conservation officer. He mentioned that on the on the website. But yeah, it's um. It seems to be a bit of a. Mess this cycle, the history of it. It's just a tail to it. I just sent you a message, so give us a list of what the reports on relevant mail.
Yeah. The um, there are four objections to it, um by the same gentleman, um three regarding surface water drainage. And the others about waste management, the distance that people are going to have to take wheelie bins and probably leave them out because they were. They take them back, they've got to move their cars, et cetera, et cetera. So again, doesn't really concern us. You know, also that Catherine has added here um below the. The twenty sixteen application proposing on material amendment to planning permission, all matters preserved. It's also pending consideration, but that's not for consultation. So all we really need to do with Catherine is just.
It would change our.
So we just.
I I had to go through both lists, compare them, they're not in the same order, they're identity same types of. So I had to go through each list to make sure that they were identical enough. And make a notice of which revision we were at on each of them, so that I knew which were the latest ones, which were scattered randomly about. Two of the documents are empty dates from two thousand and one.
It has been from real. So what I. Those end is that we have no comment.
No, for not.
Anthony?
Yeah, I was going to say just no to you, because that.
Well, I think you like us.
Yeah.
So we have no further comment.
Question.
My final seconded by Anthony, all those in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. Twelve, thirteen. Also, we've got quite twelve, thirteen.
Yes, because we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Same, same reply.
They're going, yeah. As.
Their system might happen to us.
Right, um not with consultation, pre-application, twenty one beach close, it's ash, um it's just pruning back, um we've already. Had the. Email vote on this, including our our pre-vorbs and about the. Consensus was approved, but not until August, when the nesting season. Et cetera, so that's just really matter for a ball. Thank you. Um planning decisions to receive information, planning decisions made by Buckinghamshire Council. Um candle for court, replacing the timber bin stores, extracting band buildings, we initially opposed it. Uh largely because of the trees. Um that has been approved, but no trees will now be lost. Instead of a small victory there. Um hundred and ten Western Avenue, single story front extension, we opposed, we thought it's too large, the Western Avenue, but. The planning officer who referred us to Buckingham Parish Councils um. Said it was a modest addition, it was not uncommon in the surrounding streets and it was approved by delegation. Um and then finally, under those thirty three Willow Drive, the dropped curb, which we've been. Against for some time, continue to close it, that is now being approved. Um we were prepared to be alone in our objection about the drain, right in front of the curb, going to be dropped. Highways had no problem with that. And the planning officer said that the red line. That we raised, because outside their property, it was noted, they'd given it, this is the extent of the development of the. Drop curb, I believe this is acceptable, so they approved it.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Um. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Glad to say, what you dealt with, the approach of chimney, the planning inspector, two appeals here, one against the use of twelve Brackley Road to have um. Recent land availability, compared to the construction, a landing deck on the edge of the bank. You'll recall last year that we did see photographs, this work had been done a long, long time ago, and there are dated photographs. We changed our minds and said we had no objection, but but the planning authority still wants to go ahead with refusing it and. This council, but he wants to add anything to. It has to be done by me at first.
I'm totally yours.
The conduits, yeah.
By the decree, an interest.
Okay, well, just say, if you have this wish to add that, I mean, and then the appeal's been lodged against the refusal of Stony House Boutique Hotel in Castle Street. The change back for private residence, the dinner is one of the best. One of the nicest, um great. Great two listed buildings in Buckingham, and we don't want to see it fall to disrepair, it's been empty for some time now, but. Economic development to Earl Street, I'm assisting with it, it's advertised for the proper decade of time, up to two years before. And we've been changing views, so that's gone to appeal. And again, if anyone wants to add anything to our original responses, needed to do so by second mate, John first, then Roger.
Well, the the wording in our town is about a date now, because obviously the best western is not going. A hotel again, it looks like it's a long term change, basically going. More like, it's a teaching facility for the university, so. Do need to change that, otherwise it makes what we say a little bit silly.
Well, that was probably from the.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's, it's now the day.
But I was, yeah, following what John was saying, with the um. Reason for refusal is that it would lose its space in Buckingham. And since that time, that that was written. Best western gone, um and there was no. Britain, obviously, of course, there is no evidence of small building, the air building is fine, but it almost keeps it human now. And so I'm wondering if you, I don't know what. Um leaders of council, if you support the people, it might be worth mentioning that. That, you know, the best western has gone, and also there are other alternatives within the town, the voluntary accommodation. Rather than just do it through those doors.
So what we're, what we're saying is that there's no less hotel accommodation in town, so we.
There is, but there's a lot of alternatives, if you go, if you go on there, there's.
Yeah.
You know, he got Premier Inn. You know, this, this part of the novel. And I don't, you know, the best western hasn't been used by itself, but I think this for a lot of times. I don't think the town has lost anything in particular, you know.
But that that is the trust of our.
Yeah, but I'm arguing, you know, but.
We didn't do that accommodation.
But it's not, not easy, it's a really important building. So, you know, do we wish to be, see, you know. And get here is more. We insisted.
I mean, we did make a statement from this planning committee, wouldn't we? A further statement to this planning inspector, but would it add anything to what we've already said?
I think it would, because in all due respect, his appeal statement isn't very good. Yeah, good point, if you make an appeal statement, it doesn't go into planning policy at all. So I think if the town council wishes to support the appeal to the house. It can, you know, you know, it's all the nursing care, I think. I think it's worthwhile, you're very good.
Um, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll come back to your fantasy, we can do that, can we at this thing, yeah, yeah, we can. It's um.
That's what seconded Maggie.
Yeah.
It's on you.
General. Yeah, we don't need to go past the council, we do it from this committee, we do have the authority to do that, mandate it to do that. Thank you.
And do we know how many rooms actually had in that, and it was trading as? Six, yeah. Six, so it's not that great, yeah.
The stupid thing is that they allocated that to a number of stocks, so there being a five let's all rooms, this would not have been the point. Yeah. Thank you.
Right, um Jane?
Government with no expertise whatsoever, um is there any evidence that we can use to push the idea that leaving a building. Frozen in time for three years will cause harm?
That was something I was going to raise as well, so. So following Roger's um suggestion. We understand, agree that we do. Send um excellent additional comments to the planning inspector along the lines of Roger outlined about there is sufficient.
At B and B, like John, how many are?
The constitution.
Nine in all that was four.
Yeah, and I did give you an army. Support to it, state about the.
I haven't got that far.
No, but certainly what Jane is saying, we take on board, but you know, we we have a wish also, but we don't want to see.
Yes, and we did make that point.
Yeah, a problem, a problem. So that's already in our responses, yeah.
Wish for them to inspect.
So the one we're dealing with is, as Roger says, about the sufficient rooms in town, and. That's noted, the closure of Best Western hasn't made a, any, any impact on that.
It's a lack of demand because the best western isn't taking us into town.
Yeah.
So there is no demand, you have the standards.
Yeah. At B and B and, you know, that's like, it's first, friend, and then.
Well, just to really force that point, if the, if the planning authority were happy with the removal of the hotel rooms in the Best Western. From the local hotel room um numbers, how on earth can they object to this? It's not logical, is it? Because we're talking of, I don't know, sixty odd rooms or something in Best Western versus the five, no available here. You know, they can't, it's not consistent.
Yeah, fine.
Um I'd say that that the argument would be that since um the. Is it the Premier Inn that's um, not Costa Cosco?
Yeah.
Not Costa, Costa, that one, yeah, so since, since that was given, given permission. Um and the um hotel on the grounds at Silverstone was given permission, is being subsequent to. The BT Hotel gaining permission, and therefore there's been a net gain in rooms in the area. Which is, which has made it unviable for that business to, to actually.
Good morning, Andy.
This is a very similar point to what the council, as Dave was saying, yes, the Premier Inn has taken up the. Uh slack from the best.
And and so. Thank you. Is everyone happy there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave that Catherine to draft the response to the inspector, so all those in favour? Thank you. Anthony seconded, yeah, and. Thank you, everyone. Um chairmen's items for information. Um I just found one, um myself, Anthony met Roy Underpaul from Winslow Town Council. Um a couple of weeks back to discuss our mutual concerns over the. Lack of respect we believe we're being treated, with which we've been treated by a local planning authority. And we agreed joint letter to be sent from Buckingham and town, uh and Winslow Town Councils. Um we ran this past the town clerk and Claire. He's quite happy for me to put a motion to the next full council meeting, which would be this letter. Um and Winslow Council will do the same, but that will be directly to Martin Fair. Either the council, um we have a little bit of space to do that because. The the next full council's not the middle of May, um and at this moment, as you know, we are still awaiting replies from our motion to council Peter Straker. The cabinet member, we haven't had a response to that yet, but along the same lines, but it's been much more forceful. And we believe by sending it from the two town councils in the north of the county, we'll give a lot more strength. Lisa.
Thanks, as probably the parish council been asked if they wanted to join there, because they're in the middle of breaking laws, aren't they?
Yeah, we discussed this and both Roy and I started to be stronger at first, just coming from the two town councils. Because of course both Roy and Anthony are on the North Bucks Parish's planning consortium. And Claire asked me, would it not be stronger coming from the planning consortium, but Roy said, no, he felt, he felt. And I agree with him, that it would be much stronger in the first instance, from the two town councils, so the, the two councils who have the most planning input. In the north, north of the county. That was the answer to that.
Yeah, thanks.
Robin. Yeah, I'm pleased that you've got some agreement, thank Anthony, you've put it out for, I think that. There is a misunderstanding, uh miscommunication and a, a miss, and and a unrecognition of difference between North Buckinghamshire. The same, I think that actually speaking strongly about North Buckinghamshire is exactly what the sound council should do. I think it's really good that Winslow are supporting you. There is um. Many questions which have been raised, without going into details of them over a number of months, years now, since Buckinghamshire Council. Coming to operation. We always thought it was um difficult enough before the list of council, but I think it would be fair to say that the. Problems are multiplied by the constitution and everything else, so I look forward to the motion coming to council. I also think that um. We should be, we are the planning committee, but I hope that those members who are on the planning committee may not have seen. The detail of what members of the planning committee have seen over a long period of time, so it might be worth. Um to say repetitive questions about the worth of the motion. Is to make sure that they do have um sight of the problems and what we've done, so that when, in in that report, because. Otherwise we'll get, I don't see why you're saying that, and these sort of questions which, which aren't really useful. And I think the evidence is there, it's in your minutes, chairman, and the clerks' minutes, the council minutes of what the problem is, so. Men, you both have really thought and the time you spent with Winslow Town Council, I've been spending quite a lot of time there recently. It's um walking around Winslow, it's um, it's very similar to us, that's the same problem.
Thank you, Robin. So that letter will come to the May thirteenth from council, all members to, as a motion, as a vote on. Thank you. Uh in that case, if nothing else, um they should the next meeting, Monday, twenty four, okay? That's the one we're doing, and with that, we.